All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:05, and I would like to convene the Westminster City Council Successor Agency to the Westminster Redevelopment Agency meeting to order. Right, City Clerk, please call roll, call roll, please.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilwoman Fan West.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Monzo.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Vice Mayor, you have a quorum with Mayor Nguyen absent.
Thank you, City Clerk, and today, Councilmember Amy Fan West will do the salute to the flag, and followed by Councilmember Kimberly Ho do the invocation. Please stand.
Please join me for the saluting the flag. This is a flag that symbolize America, the land of the free and home of the brave, and it will always be honored, so please honor, take this time to honor with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and bow your heads. We pray tonight to whatever source we turn to for strength. We pray that as leaders of our community, we might have the insight and courage to serve the citizens of Westminster with wisdom and truth. We ask for your guidance in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring that decisions made this evening are in the best interest of our city and its citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fan West and Councilmember Ho.
Next is City Attorney. Do you have anything to report?
There was, there was no closed session tonight, so there's nothing to report from closed session, but before we proceed, there's one item that Councilwoman, Councilwoman Amy Fan West has asked to walk onto the agenda as an urgency item. The rule with urgency items is that it requires a two-thirds vote in order to walk an item onto the agenda, finding both that the item was sufficiently urgent and that it cannot wait, and that the issue arose after the posting of the agenda. In situations such as tonight where we have less than all five councilmembers present, a unanimous vote would be required. And so with that, I think Councilwoman West had, she wanted to explain the urgency of the item.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm asking tonight for the council to vote, to walk in the proclamation, which is the three red stripe in the field of goal, which is the Vietnam flag, as proclaiming that we acknowledge today, November 8th, 2023, as a flag affirmation day concerning the Vietnamese national flag, the three stripe in the field of goal as Vietnam national flag that was recognized on February 4th, 1950, in our government, historical government document. So also, you know, we do have, the urgency is that this proclamation, HR 560, is sponsored by Michelle Steele, Representative Michelle Steele, and Lou Korea, and with this proclamation from this group, giving it to them tonight, they can push it through to make sure it's heard on the floor. So right now, it's in committee, so that's the urgency right now, but I'll give more detail once it is approved to walk in on the agenda. Without being on the agenda, I can't go in detail. So I ask the council to allow us to talk about it, and however you guys vote, you guys can vote.
Okay.
So do I motion? I motion to walk this in.
A second.
So I have a motion made by Councilwoman Fan West, a second made by Vice Mayor Nguyen. This is to walk on the item for our proclamation, recognizing the Vietnam Flag Affirmation Day. I'll go ahead and call roll, Councilwoman Fan West.
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo.
I just, the reason for my vote is that I don't, I don't really see the, the urgency in this matter, so my vote is no.
Councilmember Ho.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I don't see an urgency, and, you know, I think we, we really need to stick to our process, and unfortunately, I know nothing, not much about this, and I, I'm sorry to say that I will vote no.
And Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion failed. We needed a unanimous vote.
So then, what I was thinking is, I would like to put this on the December agenda, but I'll ask that at the end, okay?
All right, thank you, and we move to the next part, which is expertise communication. Are there any expertise communications? No, see, none, next is City Clerk, report, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nguyen. Staff is requesting that agenda item number 3.8 be pulled from the consent calendar and heard as agenda item number 5.2 under regular business. This is due to the amount of the contract. Additionally, as a reminder, the November 22nd City Council meeting has been canceled, and we wish everyone a safe and happy holiday. That concludes my report.
Thank you, City Clerk, and City Manager, do you have anything to speak?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and members of the community tuning in today. So first off, today, November 8th, is Police Records Appreciation Day, so we'd like to thank all the members of our WPD records team. These dedicated members of the department process thousands of police reports annually and assist members of the public at the front lobby with their police needs. Last year, record staff processed over 4,000 court packages, answered thousands of phone calls, and assisted thousands of citizens at the front counter, so please help me in recognizing our records personnel and the outstanding work they do. Next, Shop with a Cop. Kudos to the Westminster PD and the Police Officers Association for once again teaming up with the Boys and Girls Club, Fountain Valley POA, and Walmart to host the Shop with a Cop event. This event is by invitation only and will occur in early December. For those of you who are not familiar with the event, children in need are selected to participate in a shopping spree with members of our PD or of the various PDs, and Santa Claus is also escorted to this event by WPD. The cost of this program is graciously covered by the POAs and Walmart. This Saturday, November 11th, is Veterans Day, and the PD wanted council and the public to know they will be internally unveiling a patch honoring veterans, their sacrifices and their service to our country to commemorate Veterans Day. Although this patch has been designed and approved by the Chief of Police, it will not be available and officially released until Memorial Day of 2024. The Veteran Patch Program will be similar to the department's Pink Patch Project. More details to follow in this program next year, but in the meantime, I'd like to thank all those who have served and wish them a happy Veterans Day. Speaking of veterans, it's not too late to pick up a Proud Veteran sign, stop by the Community Services and Recreation Building tomorrow from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. to pick up a free sign. For more information, call 714-895-2860. And of course, if you'd like to take a photo of the sign that's on your Proud Veterans lawn, we would be more than happy to repost it on our social media. And then, of course, winter is coming, holidays are just around the corner, so mark your calendars for a few of our fun and festive events. We will be having a tree lighting ceremony on Monday, December 4th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. here in the Civic Center. We will have breakfast with Santa, popular event, Saturday, December 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., and this is a ticketed event, and it does sell out, so make sure you register early. And of course, our Santa on the Go program will be taking place again for the third year, Friday, December 8th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Sigler Park, Saturday, December 9th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Westminster Village Park, and Saturday, December 16th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Coronet Park, and then from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. at Westminster Park. So please visit our website for more details, and of course, follow us on social media for all the latest news and events. And of course, speaking of another great event coming up, we have our upcoming TEP Parade, which will be taking place on Saturday, February 10th. We are currently seeking sponsors as well as parade participants. Applications are now available online and at the, on the, at the city's website, so apply today to secure your spot. And of course, we can't, we can't not acknowledge our wonderful partying senior centers, we have a few lunches coming up, so on Veterans Day, our Veterans Day luncheon will be taking place on Thursday, November 9th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., free for veterans. And on, thanks, for Thanksgiving, we're having our annual Thanksgiving luncheon, which will be on November 15th, 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Tickets are only $5, so to purchase a ticket, visit the senior center or call 714-895-2878 for more information. And that concludes my report for tonight, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, City Manager Christine Caudill, and next is special presentation, right? No? Okay, all right, so next is oral communication. City Clerk, please read the following interlocutor, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Switcheroo here, all right. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on the agenda, except public hearing items. Members of the public wishing to address the public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
All right, so please call for the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Tammy Hamel.
Good evening, Tammy Hamel, Westminster resident. Tonight, I'm going to speak on the item on the agenda, which is the invocation. Since Amy Fan West continues to use her city council seat to grandstand and shove her religion in residents' faces on her official council page, she's opened the door for religion to be discussed in city forums, so it's only right to give residents the opportunity to use these meetings to express their point of view. So I believe there needs to be a change to the invocation, and I have some ideas. Leave it at the beginning of the meetings and allow a resident to publicly say a prayer from their faith and rotate them every meeting. Put the invocation at the end of the meeting after oral comments, because in Charlie's words, "If it's important enough to say at a meeting, then it can wait until the end", just like he voted to make residents wait to say their comments till the end.
City Attorney, I have a question. Can you pause? So since I didn't do any invocation, I don't know how is it on the agenda today? I, I did the flag salute, so.
It has nothing to do with you saying it.
It's proper because it, there is invocation on the agenda, so it's, it's a subject matter that's on the agenda, so it would be proper subject to talk about.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Go ahead, you can continue.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks, yeah. Charlie called some residents' comments nonsense as his reason for putting non-agenda comments at the end. To some of us, these prayers are nonsense and have no place in city meetings in the first place, so put your personal faith to the test. Be inclusive and allow residents to say a prayer from their faith at meetings. Put the invocation at the end of meetings, then we'd see how important it is to Amy if she has to stay like she also voted to make residents do. Or remove the invocation altogether, because you should be able to govern without asking for guidance, and really, the way some of you behave in and out of meetings, if you were true Christians with any self-awareness, you'd be using those prayers to ask for forgiveness.
Our next speaker is going to be Deborah Mariscal. Deborah, our next speaker.
I'm not agenda.
All right, then our next speaker is Connie Cohen.
Good evening, I have two different comments, one regarding the agenda and one regarding item, where is it, over here? 7.2 Establishment of Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee? I'm just curious, I didn't understand something here, let me get into this one. On the, on the subject and the recommended action for this item, in the background, it says, "On November 8th, 2023, the residents of Westminster approved ordinance number 2589." Wasn't that November 8th, 2022? That might need to be a correction. And separately, on the agenda, I know you have two different times for people to speak, I can't stay the entire time. A friend of mine who is on Zoom watching and watches you guys continually, by the name of Andrew, wanted to make sure I said hello to you all, and he would, and if he gets the chance to come, he would love to be able to speak early in the process, and I wonder if you guys thought about the health of some of your residents and their abilities to stay up late at night when you moved that item number? And I would consider, I would ask you to consider moving all public comments to the beginning. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker for our agenda items is Teri Reins.
Good evening, thank you for recognizing the Orange County Grand Jury, hopefully, with the proclamation, item 3.3, the Grand Jury is crucial to obtaining criminal indictments and civil investigations on corrupt politicians. Westminster may have a few cases before then soon, so stay tuned. Item 3.6, you can thank the voters of this city for contributing almost $77 million to the city's coffers over five and a half years. Item 3.8, I am glad Edward Street will finally be rehabbed from Westminster to Trask, and I'm sure District 1 residents are especially happy. Item 5.1, I recommend John Gentile for the Foundation Board with his vast knowledge of and experience with fundraising charities in our city. Item 7.2, at the October 11th meeting, I stated if this council didn't officially establish a Measure Y Oversight Committee immediately as required by ordinance 2589 approved by the voters exactly one year ago today, a court order would be sought to force your hand. On July 10th, the city manager informed you that five people had already applied to be on this committee, yet nothing was done. The city didn't even bother to contact those applicants after repeated inquiries and is now going to recruit for another 30 days. In contrast, when the voters passed Measure SS in November 2016, the SS Oversight Committee was established by Resolution 4825 on January 11th, 2017, and all members were appointed on August 16th. Item 8, residents with real concerns about city issues are now forced to wait until God knows when to address this council. You should want to hear your constituents' concerns and ensure they have easy access to present them to you, so bring back Zoom access now. Item 3.3, Part 2, although not on the posted agenda, Amy put out an official press release last week in stating that a proclamation she is proposing to, quote, "reaffirm the Vietnam National Flag," the three red stripes.
Teri Reins, that's not on the agenda.
Your press release said it would be discussed and voted on tonight. Stop my time, please, give me back what I lost.
City manager, is that on the agenda?
That is not on the agenda.
Her press release said it will be discussed and voted on.
That doesn't mean it's on the agenda. It's not, it was voted on.
Wow, but.
You can talk about it at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, well, I have other comments to make at that time. Okay, fine. Item 10, then, please adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Lou.
posted on our social media. And then, of course, winter is coming. Holidays are just around the corner. So mark your calendars for a few of our fun and festive events. We will be having a tree lighting ceremony on Monday, December 4th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. here in the Civic Center. We will have breakfast with Santa, a popular event, Saturday, December 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. And this is a ticketed event, and it does sell out. So make sure you register early. And of course, our Santa on the Go program will be taking place again for the third year. Friday, December 8th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Sigler Park; Saturday, December 9th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Westminster Village Park; and Saturday, December 16th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Coronet Park; and then from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. at Westminster Park. So please visit our website for more details, and of course, follow us on social media for all the latest news and events. And of course, speaking of another great event coming up, we have our upcoming TEP Parade, which will be taking place on Saturday, February 10th. We are currently seeking sponsors as well as parade participants. Applications are now available online and at the city's website. So apply today to secure your spot. And of course, we can't not acknowledge our wonderful partying senior centers. We have a few lunches coming up. So on Veterans Day, our Veterans Day luncheon will be taking place on Thursday, November 9th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., free for veterans. And for Thanksgiving, we're having our annual Thanksgiving luncheon, which will be on November 15th, 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Tickets are only $5. So to purchase a ticket, visit the senior center or call 714-895-2878 for more information. And that concludes my report for tonight. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Christine Codon. And next is special presentation, right? No? Okay. All right. So next is oral communication. City Clerk, please read the following interlocutor, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Switcheroo here. All right. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda, except public hearing items. Members of the public wishing to address the public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the City Council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
All right. So please call for the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Tammy Hamel.
Good evening. Tammy Hamel, Westminster resident. Tonight, I'm going to speak on the item on the agenda, which is the invocation. Since Amy Fan West continues to use her City Council seat to grandstand and shove her religion in residents' faces on her official council page, she's opened the door for religion to be discussed in city forums. So it's only right to give residents the opportunity to use these meetings to express their point of view. So I believe there needs to be a change to the invocation. And I have some ideas. Leave it at the beginning of the meetings and allow a resident to publicly say a prayer from their faith and rotate them every meeting. Put the invocation at the end of the meeting after oral comments, because in Charlie's words, if it's important enough to say at a meeting, then it can wait until the end, just like he voted to make residents wait to say their comments till the end.
City Attorney, I have a question. Can you pause? So since I didn't do any invocation, I don't know how is it on the agenda today? I did the flag salute.
It has nothing to do with you saying it.
It's proper, because there is invocation on the agenda. So it's a subject matter that's on the agenda. So it would be proper subject to talk about.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you. Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks, yeah. Charlie called some residents' comments nonsense as his reason for putting non-agenda comments at the end. To some of us, these prayers are nonsense and have no place in city meetings in the first place. So put your personal faith to the test. Be inclusive and allow residents to say a prayer from their faith at meetings. Put the invocation at the end of meetings. Then we'd see how important it is to Amy if she has to stay, like she also voted to make residents do. Or remove the invocation altogether, because you should be able to govern without asking for guidance. And really, the way some of you behave in and out of meetings, if you were true Christians with any self-awareness, you'd be using those prayers to ask for forgiveness.
Our next speaker is going to be Deborah Mariscal. Deborah, our next speaker.
I'm non-agenda.
All right. Then our next speaker is Connie Cohen.
Good evening. I have two different comments, one regarding the agenda and one regarding item... Where is it? Over here. 7.2, establishment of Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee. I'm just curious, I didn't understand something here. Let me get into this one. On the subject and the recommended action for this item, in the background, it says, "On November 8th, 2023, the residents of Westminster approved Ordinance Number 2589." Wasn't that November 8th, 2022? That might need to be a correction. And separately, on the agenda, I know you have two different times for people to speak. I can't stay the entire time. A friend of mine, who is on Zoom watching and watches you guys continually, by the name of Andrew, wanted to make sure I said hello to you all. And if he gets the chance to come, he would love to be able to speak early in the process. And I wonder if you guys thought about the health of some of your residents and their abilities to stay up late at night when you move that item number. And I would ask you to consider moving all public comments to the beginning. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker for our agenda items is Terry Rains.
Good evening. Thank you for recognizing the Orange County Grand Jury, hopefully, with a proclamation. Item 3.3, the Grand Jury is crucial to obtaining criminal indictments and civil investigations on corrupt politicians. Westminster may have a few cases before then soon, so stay tuned. Item 3.6, you can thank the voters of this city for contributing almost $77 million to the city's coffers over five and a half years. Item 3.8, I am glad Edward Street will finally be rehabbed from Westminster to Trask, and I'm sure District 1 residents are especially happy. Item 5.1, I recommend John Gentile for the Foundation Board with his vast knowledge of and experience with fundraising charities in our city. Item 7.2, at the October 11th meeting, I stated if this council didn't officially establish a Measure Y Oversight Committee immediately, as required by Ordinance 2589 approved by the voters exactly one year ago today, a court order would be sought to force your hand. On July 10th, the City Manager informed you that five people had already applied to be on this committee, yet nothing was done. The city didn't even bother to contact those applicants after repeated inquiries and is now going to recruit for another 30 days. In contrast, when the voters passed Measure SS in November 2016, the SS Oversight Committee was established by Resolution 4825 on January 11th, 2017, and all members were appointed on August 16th. Item 8, residents with real concerns about city issues are now forced to wait until God knows when to address this council. You should want to hear your constituents' concerns and ensure they have easy access to present them to you. So bring back Zoom access now. Item 3.3, Part 2, although not on the posted agenda, Amy put out an official press release last week in stating that a proclamation she is proposing to, quote, reaffirmed the Vietnam National Flag, the three red stripes...
Terry Rains, that's not on the agenda.
Your press release said it would be discussed and voted on tonight. Stop my time, please. Give me back what I lost.
City manager, is that on the agenda?
That is not on the agenda.
Her press release said it will be discussed and voted on.
That doesn't mean it's on the agenda. It's not. It was voted on.
Wow. But...
You can talk about it at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I have other comments to make at that time. Okay. Fine. Item 10, then. Please adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Lieutenant Colonel Craig Mandeville, who passed away on October 10th, a highly decorated war veteran and successful business executive, who was instrumental in the creation and installation and getting it approved, the Vietnam War Memorial Project, at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park. I have provided you all copies of his obituary/tribute. So rest in peace, Craig, wherever you are, and thank you for your service. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, we have no more speakers for agenda items. Everything else is for non-agenda.
Are there a way that we... Mr. Vice Mayor, are there a way that we can move today non-agenda item forward as well, since it's a short agenda tonight? Is that a possibility, that we can vote on for that?
You know what? The calendar is short, and I think we can finish this before 8. So I would like to stick with it.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Next is Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council or staff request that specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action or discussion. All right. Does anyone have any item to pull or motion for the Consent Calendar?
Vice Mayor, I motion to approve all items on the Consent Calendar.
I would just like to make clarification. Councilmember Monzo, I'm sorry for interrupting. We will be doing the full Consent Calendar with the removal of 3.8, which has been seen as now 5.2.
Yes. And then the proclamation that was to be presented as well. So we're pulling 3.3...
3.3.
And 3.8.
Okay. I amend my motion to approve the Consent Calendar, except item 3.3 and 3.8, and also the proclamation approved as well.
A second.
All right. So I have a motion made by Councilmember Monzo, a second made by Vice Mayor Nguyen. This is to approve the Consent Calendar as presented with the removal of Item 3.3 and 3.8. I'll go ahead and call Roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. So... Okay. So item 3.3?
3.3, yes.
You would just need to make a motion to...
Oh. I'll make a motion to approve Item 3.3.
I second it.
Okay. So I have a motion made by Councilmember Monzo, a second made by Councilwoman Fan West. This is to approve agenda item 3.3, which is the proclamation for Grand Jury Appreciation Month of November 2023. I'll go ahead and call Roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Next, 3.4. Is there any discussion that you want to discuss?
Which one?
Item 3.4, resolutions?
So we're going to be doing Item 3.3 for Grand Jury Appreciation Month?
Oh, okay. All right. So I'm going to read it from here, and then later you guys... I'm going to ask the entire council members to join me to present it to Mr. Michael over there. All right. Grand Jury Appreciation Month, November 2023. We gather to recognize the significance of Grand Jury Appreciation Month observed in the month of November. Grand juries have been in existence since the adoption of California's original constitution in 1849. Grand juries serve as the watchdog authority and reveal the operation of the officers, departments, and agencies of local government. Grand jurors share a dedication to democratic ideals and a willingness to devote their time and energy to matters of civic importance. The City of Westminster recognized the efforts of those jurors, both past and present, who have volunteered their time and service to the Orange County Grand Jury. Now, therefore, I, Nam Quan Nguyen, Vice Mayor, on behalf of the City of Westminster, Mayor Chi Chalinguen and Councilmember Amy Fan West, Carlos Manzo, and Kimberly Ho, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as Grand Jury Appreciation Month in the City of Westminster and encourage residents to volunteer and serve on the Orange County Grand Jury. All right. Can you guys join me?
Do you want to say some few words? Do you want to say something? Can you say something? Do you want to say something? Well, I'll say something on behalf of you.
No. Thank you, those of you... Those of you who were here last week, should say last meeting, heard us ask for the residents of Westminster, as well as the rest of the county, to apply for the Grand Jury. The more people that apply, the better the cross-section of representation for this county it is. We want people from all walks of life, all nationalities, all religions. Doesn't make any difference if you're college-educated or high school-educated. It's what you bring to the table and the fact that you're representing your community on the Grand Jury. Thank you very much.
That's so awesome that you're doing this, because I have friends who are on the Grand Jury, too. They do advocate for people to come and get involved, because, you know, we need to be the eyes of Orange County. And it's thank you, Michael, for doing that. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Michael. I truly appreciate your commitment to not only our city but our county, and it takes a lot of dedication and heart. So thank you very much on behalf of myself and personally. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Carlos.
I feel left out. Michael, thank you so much. And I know you've been coming to our meetings every single time, almost, right? And participating as well. And I've always been so curious, you know, regarding Orange County Grand Jury. And I'd love for you to give us a tour or give us some education or case studies. I'd love that. And thank you for your service. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councilmembers, and thank you, Michael, for joining us. Next is 3.4.
We're going to 5.1 now. We approved the full Consent Calendar, so we're going to...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're going to move over to 5.1.
Yes. All right. I just want to go back.
What about 3.8? Did we not pull 3.8?
So 3.8 is pulled, but it's now going to be 5.2.
I got you. I got you. Thanks.
All right. So next is 5.1, right?
5.2.
5.1, City Council appointment to the Westminster Community Foundation. I believe that some of the councilmember owners, right? An appointment. Yeah, just you.
Okay. All right. So the person that I'd like to appoint for this is a very important position. I think it's a very important position, is John Gentile. And fortunately, he told me ahead of time that he's not here. He's in the Philippines. But he knows he's being appointed and that he is volunteering for the job. And so I welcome John Gentile. Thank you.
All right. So...
Can we have a motion for the council to approve the appointment?
I'd like to make a motion for John Gentile to be approved for this appointment.
Okay. I have a motion made by Councilwoman Ho and a second made by Councilmember Monzo. This is for the appointment of John Gentile to the Westminster Community Foundation to fill the unscheduled vacancy for a term ending January 2026. I'll go ahead and call Roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Next is 5.2, which is the 3.8, right?
Correct.
Okay. Which is the war of contract for the Edward Street Improvement Project from Westminster Boulevard to Trask Avenue, Plan Number P2583, open for discussion.
I have a couple of questions. May I call Jacob? Thank you. I was reading this, and I just want to know, Jake, is this the amount from the general fund that we'll be withdrawing? Or is it from a grant? So if you can verify that, that'd be great.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. To answer your question, the fund for this project will be used from, we call it, gas tax. They call it highway user tax. So it's not from a general fund.
Okay. That's good. So the full amount will be reward for the street, right?
Correct. We could use the entire amount for this project.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Oh, we'll go in order. Yeah, just really quickly. I know you went through the RFP process and a fair process. I'd just like to know if RJ Noble Company... We've dealt with them before. Have we had any problems?
Oh, we have multiple projects in the past with them, and they do a great job.
That's great. Thank you.
I'm good. Okay, I'm good. So we have a motion of... A motion to approve?
A second.
Just go ahead for Callroll, please.
So I have a motion made by Councilmember Monzo and a second made by Councilmember Ho. This is to approve staff recommendation to approve the award of contract to the lowest and responsible bidder in the amount of $676,694 to RJ Noble Company Incorporated, and that all other bids be rejected, and authorize a 10% contingency in the amount of $67,669.40 for potential change orders, and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city in a form approved by the City Attorney. I'll go ahead and call Roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next is Item 7.1. Proposal to approve the installation of a white loading zone at 7124 Westminster Boulevard.
Before you begin, I'd like to... I need to recuse myself. I have property just across the street from there, within 500 feet.
Are you excused?
Thank you.
Okay. I open for discussion. Item 7.1.
Do we have a staff report, or just review?
I can refuel on it, answer questions.
Very quickly.
Yeah, very quickly. This item went to the Traffic Commission not too long ago as TC Item 23-102.
Ms. Cooper?
The non-agenda item will be afterward, Ms. Cooper.
Yeah, please.
Ms. Cooper.
Ms. Cooper, please.
Non-agenda... Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
So Item 7.1.
First warning, Ms. Cooper. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.1 has to do with Traffic Commission Item 23-102, which is installation of a white loading/unloading zone at 7124 Westminster Boulevard. This item went to the Traffic Commission on October 26, 2023. The location is 7124 Westminster Boulevard. There's a project that we all are very familiar with, which is the Crossings Project. It's a mixed-use project on Westminster Boulevard, just east of Locust. And as part of the planning process, as the plans were routed to different stakeholders, the Post Office requested a white loading zone. That's pretty typical on new development projects. They want to identify these types of amenities. And during the course of the project, the white loading zone was actually installed without approval from council. So this is really a cleanup item. It's working well. Everyone's in support of it. So we're just asking that the council approve Traffic Commission recommendation so that it can be official and end up in our records.
Perfect.
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I motion to approve this.
A second, but I have a quick question. Has there been any issues added to this point with residents or other businesses?
No, there's no issues with the loading/unloading zone. It's working well. And prior to the Traffic Commission meeting, we did let the Post Office know that it was going on there. They were supportive of it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Adolfo.
Thank you.
City Clerk, we have a motion on the floor. Go ahead, call for a vote.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a motion made by Councilwoman Fan West, a second made by Councilmember Monzo. This is to approve the Traffic Commission recommendation to adopt a Resolution Number 5224, entitled "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, Providing for a Passenger Loading/unloading Zone at a Certain Location on the South Side of the Westminster Boulevard, East of Locust Street." I'll go ahead and call Roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Next is 7.2. Should we call Councilmember Ho back in?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yes. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Ho. Next is 7.2, establishment of the Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee. So, uh, are you going to, uh, report or anything?
Um, good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. I don't have a presentation, I'm available to answer questions if you have any.
Oh, okay, so I open for question and discussion.
I have a question, so, uh, when is, when are we gonna be appointed? What timeframe, next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, this is very important, so I move to approve.
A second.
Alright, so we have motion on the floor, go ahead, call for vote.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Ho, a second made by Councilmember Monzo. This is to approve staff recommendation to approve resolution number 5225, "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, Establishing the Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee and Adopting the Committee's Roles and Responsibilities." I'll go ahead and call roll, Councilwoman Van West.
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, can we finish by 7:30?
7:30, I think.
No, it's up to Terry Rains. Okay, um, 8, oral communication. So this is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction, unless otherwise, it's standard by a majority vote of the City Council. Uh, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a yellow speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chamber and submit to the card, submit the card to the City Clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence, optional, for the record. Yeah, City Clerk, please call for speaker.
Our first speaker is Deborah Miraschel.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, uh, Council. Um, my legal name is Deborah, I don't go by Deborah except to my mom, so please address me as Deborah. I, I will not answer you if you call me Debbie, that's, that's my mom only. Proclamations are a really nice thing, but they are just words. I can proclaim that the sky is blue and the grass is green sometimes, but it's just words. So that would be like the difference between a pledge or donation. I can pledge that I'm gonna do something, money, time, physical activity, but I, do I actually do it? Do I donate that? There's a difference. So I would like a proclamation and a contract that our current council focus on the issues of Westminster. Not Garden Grove, not the county, not the state, not the federal issues, also not other countries, especially their flags, that's their business, not ours. Would the current council remember that they were voted to work on and represent Westminster? Issues, we got plenty. We still have a financial crisis, we've got budget issues, homelessness, blight, as, uh, Councilmember Carlos said last week, also known as slum, which I have heard our city called that. We've got motorhomes parking on residential streets, we've got domestic violence, and the list goes on and on and on. There are plenty of things in Westminster to focus on, we don't need to go outside of, um, of that. If you wanna do those, do it outside of Westminster on your own time and don't use the official representation of Westminster to do whatever it is that you're gonna do. Um, topic change, bring back Zoom. A few people have already commented on that, um, I might show up in my pajamas next time because, you know, we don't get to speak until close to 10 o'clock, I wanna be comfy and it's time for me to go to bed. Also, a couple of you left early last time. It's extremely rude to the residents who come to speak and to give you their viewpoints. It's just not acceptable. If you don't wanna stay through the whole meeting, then just resign, thank you.
Our next speaker is Terry Rains.
Hello, trunk or treat was so much fun, great job, everyone, only one council member, Carlos Manzo, was there, even though it was on all of your calendars, still no Veterans Day event to honor our American veterans, why? When is the city gonna adopt an ordinance to prohibit people from storing RVs on our city streets for free? We do have habitual offenders in this city. Amy, you rudely left the dais just 24 minutes into the last meeting for 14 minutes, conveniently missing agenda public comments. Then when the mayor announced that Nam Quan had to leave almost an hour before the end of the meeting, you announced that you had to leave too. No reason or heads up for either departure was provided to staff or the public. Amy, it appeared as though you saw an out and decided to ditch your duties and avoid public comments at the end of the meeting because you were still pouting over the mayor's sign item, which you completely hijacked with your god-awful political grandstanding and ludicrous ideas. Amy, you don't give a damn about Westminster and you don't wanna serve the residents of this city. To see this merely an inconvenience stopped on your run for higher office, even though you lost miserably every time you did run, and you only won District 1 by 21 votes. So do us all a favor and go big and go home. Uh, Amy put out a press release last week and stating a proclamation she is proposing to, quote, "Reaffirm the Vietnam National Flag, the three red stripes upon a field of gold, as the official flag of the people of Vietnam and of Vietnam, as officially recognized by the US government on February 4, 1950," unquote, "will be, quote, scheduled for discussion and voting at our regular city council meeting on November 8, 2023 at 7:00 PM," unquote, and invited people to come and speak on it or send emails. Yeah, she stated 7:00 PM, and she signed it, Amy Plan West. I sent you all a detailed email on Monday about this and I sure hope you read it. Apparently she's trying to force Michelle Steele to change the language of HR560. Amy, you narcissistic twat waffle, stop campaigning with public resources, stop focusing on only non-Westminster issues, and for God's sake, get a friggin' clue, you cannot override the federal government, you truly are an idiot. Amy, I heard your, you got your ass handed to you on a platter at the OCGOP Central Committee meeting on October 16th. Only Van Tran for Andrew Doe, Steve Sheldon, who wants to resurrect his failed Civic Center project, and four others voted with you. Forty-eight members voted against you and your stupid proposal. What has Van Tran promised you to be his mouthpiece? You pulled papers to run again for this committee, along with Charlie Nam Quan. They don't need three members from Westminster and they sure as hell don't need you, Amy. More, most on that committee can't stand you, just like the residents of Westminster. Amy, you sign an email to the Central Committee's leadership as Councilwoman comma Garden Grove, seriously? You are so illiterate, you can't even proof emails that others write for you before you send them. Yep, this little narcissistic twat waffle doesn't even know what city she represents, oh my God. In that email, you also spelled Janet Nguyen's last name the mo, wrong, and the most common Vietnamese last name on the planet. You are Vietnamese, aren't you, Amy? You know what? Go, go big for us, go home, and pay attention, Amy.
Our next speaker is the Representatives of Alliance of Asian American Voters.
You know, before, um, Mr. Van, uh, make a comment, I wanna make a comment for Terry Rains. I know that she's talking about lawsuit coming up and stuff. You know she wasted city tax money to do an investigation of my logo? She is the one that's wasting tax dollars money, that's a shame, it's public record that we have to use a third-party attorney to investigate my logos, which is my logos, which she thinks that, uh, I couldn't, so therefore, you know, the things that she talked about lawsuit earlier coming, that is wrong, and the thing is, that is such a shame that she, the resident, is using, she just got planted in the city four years ago from Pacentia, and she's stealing your tax dollars, the public, so therefore, please-
Officer.
Please make sure that you, we don't accept bullying in this city, and so therefore, we will not allow bullying. And Terry, you have been bullying the resident who lives here for 40, 50 years, 30 years, and they've been reporting to me and it's unacceptable, we're not gonna accept that.
Amy.
Councilmember Van West, the respect goes both ways.
So therefore, the lawsuit, you are wasting the taxpayers' money. You are paying the taxpayer, and you know what, we have record of it. You, the, the attorney have proven that what you accuse is wrong, and we have you-
Amy. Amy.
Yes, it's coming, right? Yeah, you make a city here.
Okay, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, or Vice Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Thank you.
If I just may.
My name is Van Duquevau.
Can I stop you right there?
City Attorney.
I just, I just wanna be clear here. We should be very careful about the responses, they should be very brief, and they should try to address the comments that were made, okay? And we wanna be careful not to go on an extensive responses, this should be brief.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney, yes, go ahead, Mr.?
Yes, good evening, hello, Vice Mayor Nguyen, Councilmember Kibley Ho, Councilmember Carlos Manzo, and Councilmember Amy Fan West, and hello, every officer in the City of Westminster. My name is Van Duquevau, I am a businessman in Westminster. I'm also a member of the Alliance of Asian American Voters in Orange County and California. I am here tonight to address my support to the proclamation to reaffirm Vietnam National Flag by the City of Westminster. There are several reasons. I also call for all of you, the council member of Westminster, to support for the matter, because, first, every time we see the yellow flag, we will remember the place where more than 58,000 line-up American soldier sacrificed for. And also million of Vietnamese, the ally of our country, to fight and die for. This is the yellow flag, it represents for something we die for, we sacrifice for, not the matter of Vietnam, this is the matter of USA. Second, the yellow flag of Vietnamese-American is a symbol of freedom and democracy, the most noble value that Americans have sacrificed to fight and to proud for. Third, the yellow flag of Vietnam had been recognized by the United States of American Government since the 1950. I believe this is a strong reason I'm here tonight to support for Amy Fan West Council, who released the proclamation and pressed really to call for supporting. I hope this is the issue of this, our community, our Westminster, because the majority of population in Westminster is Vietnamese-American, population is a large amount. We not mean we bring the issue of Vietnam to the city, but we have to recognize something we sacrificed to, for. Soon Veteran Day is coming this weekend, I hope all of you. This is a good moment, we have to remember, we cannot forget, oh, Vietnam is an old story, Vietnam is now communist takeover, we, no more Vietnam national, it's not. I hope my address tonight to reminder all of us, respect all whatever American soldier and our, and our ally Vietnamese soldier have died for. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ann Ki.
Now I have my friend here. Okay. I can tell we need you for the young and lots of, yeah, lots of, yeah, through the car, the officer, can start, yeah, make a, okay.
Hello, every, uh, people here, hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, and City Officer in Westminster City.
Yeah, how many to the hand, you're not soon, soon, like one in the new week, for the new year, you know, you know, yet, to the one in the world, come on soon, soon, for you, come, em, for Vietnam, come, what, for that, for Vietnam, come, what?
I'm honored to be here tonight, to, uh, very happy to support for the proclamation of the City Council, whoever introduce to, uh, the city. This is a thing we have to respect, whoever fight for the flag, this is the belong to the national of Vietnam. I also have some thought like Van just say, but that's why I switch my speak to the other topic. I would very appreciate and thank you, American, whoever sponsor me. I am worth, I was a refugee from Vietnam, but I immigrate to this country because your sponsor. I very appreciate for your support and sponsor me to this country. I just remind all of you, American, the yellow flag is belong to the Vietnamese national for the people of Vietnam. The red flag of Vietnam is come from China, come from the communist. That's why not belong to Vietnam people. And also the red flag represent for the torture, the poor, the whatever is suffer from the Vietnamese people. Today, I just remind the history of 1955 when the US government recognize and support the war of Vietnam. We sacrifice to fight for whatever that is the value of American. And I reminder again, please remember the yellow flag is the represent for the value of American. I thank you very much for all of you. Let me speak tonight. And again, I would like to say, I very appreciate for your support of the yellow flag. However, if you whoever support for the red flag, I will die for what the right I fight for. Thank you very much.
I just want to make a comment to you guys. Thank you so much for coming to support the Vietnamese flag, the three stripe and the field of gold, yellow. But unfortunately, the didn't pass to walk in today for the proclamation, but I will at the end put it for the next agenda in December because the two council here did not approve of it tonight. So, but I thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be the representative from the Vietnamese American Concern Group.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Nguyen and City Councils. I would like to see if I can reserve my three minutes now for the next time as well. With your approval.
So let me stop your time really quick, sorry. So if you'd like to come back at the December meeting like Councilwoman Fan West had mentioned-
Yeah, when it's on, when it's on the agenda.
Sure. It would be the same process when you would come back to that meeting. You'll just fill out a speaker slot.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you so much. You have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker then is Tammy Hamel.
Wow. Is this on? Okay. This meeting really turned into a crap show, Amy. This is what you do. You create chaos and then you get mad when people speak about it. Christian, by the way, every time some of us speak, she takes notes and then she says she never has anything to report when there's a Public Records Act request. So before this meeting's over, you need to take all the notes that she's taken because she's supposedly writing stuff. You need to make sure that she turns those in. Because if she, if she's allowed to ignore residents-
Notes that are taken-
By taking notes-
Notes are not official records of the city. So just understand that.
Really? Okay.
They can become records, but in most cases when people write notes, they're not records of the city.
So she can just ignore it? Yeah. Nice little smirk you have, Amy, because that's what you do to residents. You're snarky. You just badmouth two councilmembers because they didn't vote in your favor. You badmouth Charlie. You badmouth the staff when they go against you. That's what you do. Yet you want to sit up here and on your council page and pretend that you're this great Christian and you are the antithesis of that. You're a complete opposite. You should be asking for forgiveness instead of sitting there praying for guidance because even if you got it, you don't listen. You do whatever you want. It's ridiculous. You just shouted at a resident about lawsuits coming. Yeah, they're going to be coming because of you, because of your ridiculous behavior. You're grandstanding for your own self-serving agenda and that's it. You focus too much on your religion, partisan politics, you badmouth the party opposite of you. You are just absolutely ridiculous. You're a complete fraud. You have no business being in that seat. Oh, you actually looked up for that one? Am I getting there? Hitting a nerve? You do seem to be losing your cool a little bit screaming at a resident like that. You know, people see this. You can't just pretend it didn't happen. It'll go away. Yeah. Keep it up. Wait till 2026. You won't have that seat for much longer.
Our final speaker, Vice Mayor, is Connie Cohen.
Thank you. You guys are so quick. I actually, I'm still here. I want to tell you a story. I've been a resident of this city for a very long time and I did a lot of PTA stuff and still volunteer and work in the school district. And for a long time, I would go to every single school board meeting and I would stand there and I would talk and ask questions and many people still recognize my voice and go, there goes Connie. She's going to complain about something. So after the meetings were over, I would give my complaint or I'd talk. Then after the meetings were over, sometimes I had an adult beverage with some of those people at the, who were sitting on that board. And I said, why don't you ever answer me? And I was told that these board members had attended classes, seminars, trainings on how to be a board member. And one of the most important things they learned was to look at me with respect and not say a word to me or any other member of the community who spoke because the tit tat back and forth doesn't work. It doesn't help the community. It doesn't have the school board. It doesn't help the city council. They also mentioned that you can use a gavel to stop people from talking. So rather than the back and forth screaming, consider, Vice Mayor Nguyen, and you may ask Mayor Ho, consider using the gavel to stop both the people here and the people on the board from the back and forth. Your meetings may become more productive. They may not be as enjoyable for the rest of us to watch because the screaming is kind of fun to watch, you guys do. But I want you to be an effective board and I'm worried about that for you guys. And I think people have been worried about it for a long time. Thank you so much and good night.
Vice Mayor, we have no further comments.
All right. Thank you for all the comments. We sure, you know, listen to, listen to your voice clearly. Okay? And now we are moving to, to part nine, which is comments from the City Councilmembers, including the ABC 1234 report. Please, Councilwoman West.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I appreciate that. So I was, you know, interrupted earlier. What I was saying is that the, one of the resident, Terry Rain, has been using the taxpayer money, filing a complaint against me regarding my seal. So I want to make it public to you guys that knowing that we have to hire a separate attorney with the taxpayer money here to make sure that I am complying with the city and also my logo is my logo for Amy Fan West, Councilwoman. And so therefore, they proven with the private attorney, which the city paid for, basically stated that what she accused of me was wrong. It has no standing. And not only that, it was conclude to be dead done case. So therefore, a resident who just came into our city, Terry Rain, for three, four years, disrupting the peace of the city and bullying the resident of the people who live for 30, 40 years, and it's unacceptable. I have been brought to my attention, those resident have brought to my attention, it's unacceptable. Because the thing is that she has a narrative. She wants to push distraction. Each time you see who is on the screen, because she sit right there and that's where the camera comes through. And so she just bash the council, the new council here who just got on have not have a chance to even do the city's business. All she does, PRA, meaning getting the public record, every week. So every week, the staff, we're paying staff, your tax dollars paying staff to get our record of what we email to each department head. That is what we're wasting money on, guys. How are we moving the city forward? How are we making this the financial hub? How are we getting out of the debt? It's because activists like that, that's distracting our city. So I encourage you, resident, stand up to bullies. We're not going to allow that because I teach my kids, no bullying allowed, even my children, they're not allowed to bully other kids. They're adults. They cannot bully you guys, resident. So please stand up for yourself. I will be behind you on this. Thank you so much. And also, as we go into Veterans Day, I want to thank you for all those veterans who have fought for this land of the free and home of the brave. And thank you for your sacrifice because my dad is one of you guys. He ran toward the enemy, but unfortunately, we lost Vietnam. You know, he was injured for it and the drama and the trauma that he have experienced as me growing up, seeing my dad cry, wake up in the middle of night crying of the drama, the trauma and the PTSD. So I understand you guys suffer. My heart goes out to you and your family. You guys sacrificed a lot and this flag, the red, white, and blue, will continue to symbolize what you fought for. And so I will always honor this flag no matter what. This is the American flag that we represent as we come into this Veterans Day. And thanks again to veteran and the Marines as we celebrate you as well. We honor and respect you and thank you for your service to this great country and your family coming along, supporting you guys. Thank you for your family as well for their sacrifice. God bless you and may God bless the United States of America.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fan West. Next is Councilmember Carlos.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, that, I wish that one resident didn't leave, you know. For us council, we seem to forget or maybe just don't pay attention when we attend these seminars, especially the League of California Cities where they specifically have, they even have skits to make it as easy for us to understand how we should conduct ourselves up here on this dais. Respect is a two-way street. Residents have a right to criticize us, to acknowledge us and praise, to disagree with us if they, if they, you know, they can say whatever they're, that's what democracy is. That's what that flag that you, that sits there, it's what it stands for, is for freedom and democracy. That's what our soldiers fought for, for the right for us residents, residents to speak their mind. They voted for us. They have a right to question our decisions up here and the way we conduct ourselves. We have to be respectful to the residents and be respectful to one another up here. And that seems to be not happening effectively with some certain councilmembers up here. It goes both ways. When somebody is speaking, taking the time out of their day to come and say, speak to us, at least, the least we can do is look them in their eyes when they're speaking to us. Because I guarantee you, if you were speaking to your child at home and your child was not looking at you when you were speaking to them, I can guarantee you that you would get upset and feel like you were being disrespected. When somebody's speaking to you, you see, you look at them in their eyes when they're speaking to you. That's basic respect. And you know what? And this is, this is the part that I hate about how our meetings get, get derailed with actions like this. This is an embarrassment to us here as a council and is embarrassment to the community, is an embarrassment to the city. We need to conduct ourselves with professionalism and look at somebody in their eyes when they're speaking to us. That is completely disrespect. And you need to learn, maybe you need to take some lessons in how to conduct yourself when someone is speaking to you. I'm not done, so let me, let me, Vice Mayor, let me gather myself for a second because I'm kind of, I'm really upset right now. Next, I want to recognize our Westminster PD Record Specialist. Thank you, all you out there. As you know, without them, our PD cannot do what they do. They're tremendous help for our police department and all kinds of activities they do to help make their job easier. So thank you and please extend my thank you to them, chief. Next, I want to, you know, we had a really, really fun at our trunk or tree event. I think that's one of the big highlights that our community so looks forward to. Had a tremendous, tremendous turnout of community. Lots of children, I know we gave away a lot of candy and, and every year, it keeps getting better and bigger. And thank you, staff. Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you for all your team that puts this event together. Thank you, Public Works. You guys were out there as well. Our PD was out there having a great old time and, and we had the haunted hallway, as they understood, which is, it was awesome. It's just awesome to see so many people out there having a good time and smiling. And that is what we should be focusing on, is community events to bring our community together like that. So I'm looking forward to our next events that we have coming for celebrating the holiday Christmas tree lighting. So please come out and, and meet new people in your community and say hi and smile and shake hands and get to know one another. Next, I want to also thank the veterans for, for your service to our country and our freedom to be able to voice our, our concerns to our elected officials and be able to have the First Amendment rights and all their freedoms that sometimes we take for granted. So thank you for all our veterans for that. And one specific veteran I would like to acknowledge right now is Lieutenant Colonel Craig Hayes Mandeville from the US Army who passed away recently. He was a decorated war veteran. He passed away in his sleep of a brief illness on October 10th of this year. He was 83 years old. He was deployed to Vietnam in 1967. In Vietnam, then Captain Mandeville served as battery commander for the 320th Field Artillery Regiment of the 101st Airborne Division. He also worked as a deputy regiment advisor of the 15th Infantry Regiment, 9th Arven Division from 1971 to 72. He received two Silver Stars and four Purple Hearts while serving in Vietnam. After retiring in California, one of the colonels' proud accomplishments was their work to create and maintain the Westminster Vietnam War Memorial that stands as a tribute to the American and South Vietnamese soldiers who fought together. He was a very true American hero and we're sorry to see him and we totally praise him for his service and may his, may he rest in peace. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. That's all I got.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I forgot to add that, you know how I asked to put in the proclamation for next week, the recognition of the three stripe-
So you want the top?
Yes.
Okay. Make it brief. Yes, please.
Yes, so staff, if you can put on record for the next proclamation for December of the three stripe and the yellow and three stripe flag. Thank you.
Yeah, you have my second. Next, Councilmember Ho, please.
I'm usually very thankful that I'm downstream from Councilmember Manzo, so I will speak less. And some of the things he already said, in the interest of time, I won't repeat. But I'd like to invite everybody to the Senior Center Veterans Day Luncheon, or it's really an invitation by our city. So please, I hope you can join me. I will be there as well. And, well, of course, it's Veterans Day that we are honoring this week. And, you know, at the top of mind are two people that, that just recently lost their lives. Mr. Kenny Huang, who's a Vietnamese veteran, and Lieutenant Colonel, as you heard, Councilmember Manzo spoke about Craig Mandeville. I'd like to thank both of them for their contribution to our city. And we won't have too much time to talk about their contributions, but perhaps, I know that there will be a, there's a request for a proclamation for Mr. Lieutenant Colonel Mandeville. And I don't know when that's going to be presented, but I'm sure it will be detailed in that ceremony or proclamation. And Mr. Kenny Huang for his contribution to our city and that he was a vice chair of the city's Guangxi Monument Committee. And don't want to belittle the contribution that Mr. Mandeville had in our city. And his contribution was way before my time, our time. But it was, I was reading the, I guess, the tribute here, probably prepared by his family. I was amazed. But one of the things that I'd like to highlight would be the fact that he, for our city, I believe, where does it say? He worked with previous councilmembers to bring the statue, the Vietnamese and American soldier statue, right at Freedom Park, Sid Goldstein Freedom Park, that we drive past every single day on the way here. And we should thank for all the, the previous councilpeople who, and as well as Craig, for their dedication to make, to, you know, that's really a huge contribution. I heard so much about that, how the, how that went about. As you know, having a monument in our city, on our parkland is a, it's a huge thing. And he fought for it, he stuck with it, and he, he made it happen. So, so our citizens here could all drive by and pay tribute. So, and that's really all I have to- So, and that's really all I have to say. I don't want to say too much more, but the main thing is to kind of highlight those, the two that just passed. And I hope that you can join me at Veterans Day Luncheon tomorrow. That's tomorrow at noon, at 11, 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ho. And, okay, I would like to say a little bit about the indication that we just had, you know, minutes earlier. As I mentioned before, you know, if we don't have the fire and then we, we don't have a smoke, right? And respect must come from both sides. And I continuously remind the people, just be nice to each other, okay? You came in here, speak your mind, we're here to listen. We appreciate that. I said so. And may I remind you guys one more time that we have a lot of young students, you know, watching on YouTube at home. And we should be, you know, our, their role model. And that's all I, I want to remind you. Okay, I, I'd like to recognize our PDs for doing a great jobs lately. If you drive around the city and then you see a big change in the cities, more clean, less homeless. And it's noticeable. That's our police department work really, really hard to, to make things right. And I heard Christine Cordon mention about all the events that we're going to have in the next couple of months. And that's, that's very interesting. Our city is, you know, coming back. And thank you Vanessa and staff for doing a great job. And let me conclude the meeting by, in the memory of Lieutenant Colonel Craig Hayes Mandeville. This is the request of Councilmember Monzo, along with Councilmember Ho and one of the constituents that we dismiss today, meaning in the honor of Lieutenant Colonel Craig's Mandeville, who passed away on October 10, 2023. So with that, I adjut the meeting.